I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's jump ahead.
I have our invocation tonight. Lord, as we start a new year, we pray for safer Billings and ask that you protect those who protect our community. Thank you for the snow that brings us moisture, nourishes our trees and parks, and reduces the risk of fire. And we remember tonight the citizens of Los Angeles who've died in the wildfires there and the tens of thousands who've lost their homes or been displaced. We pray that our community will be spared from that kind of calamity and thank you for the blessings of the past year. We ask that you hold our community in your hands in the year ahead and help us conduct this business and all business of the public with love, joy, peace, forbearance, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Amen. All of you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Gulick?
Here.
Nies?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Asprey Minor?
Here.
Tidswell?
Here.
Boyet?
Here.
Rupsis?
Here.
Mayor Cole?
Here.
Counsel, just a reminder that Channel 7 is with us tonight and I believe their microphone is the pizza box up here. So you always want to be sure to project your voice in that direction and any members of the public. When it's time for public comment, we'll ask you to go to the microphone up there and speak well into that microphone so that everybody can hear. Otherwise, there's no miking in this room. So in order for everybody to hear, please keep your voices up. First order of business are minutes. We have minutes for both December 9th and December 16th. Is there a motion for one or both or other comments? Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes for December 9th, 2024, and December 16th, 2024.
Very good. Is there a second? Second, my councilmember Tidswell. Any discussion or corrections? Councilmember Nies?
Thank you, Mayor. I had submitted a correction to Tony and Denise on one of the items in there when I separated the item for the snow removal. I had said I was separating it because I was not going to support it and the minutes indicated I was separating. But I was going to support it, but then I voted in opposition. So that just needs to be corrected. Tony said she would correct that in the minutes, but I just wanted to add that part of it. That will be corrected to I separated because I was not going to support it.
Okay. And councilmember Nies, do you remember whether that was December 9th or December 16th?
I'm sorry, that was December 9th.
December 9th. And if I could ask Tony whether she recalls and has that corrected?
It's been corrected.
It has been corrected. So the motion, I'm assuming councilmember Boyet includes that change. Councilmember Tidswell also on the second. Okay, very good. Any other discussion or corrections? If not, you have the motion for approval as corrected on the December 9th minutes and also including December 16th. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Any council courtesies this evening? We have no proclamations. So, I'm sorry, councilmember Gulick, you got a council courtesy. Go ahead.
I'm sure there's courtesy or council report, but just wanted to thank councilmember Rupsis for taking us on a tour of city properties and the morgue one. Other councilmembers for your wards. If you get the offer, I recommend taking them up on that. It's very helpful and I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. So any other council courtesies or council reports? Seeing none, then city administrator report, Chris.
Yes, so a couple items directly tied to the agenda itself. Consent agenda, item 1A3. We ask that that item be removed from the agenda. We'll bring it back to you. That, I believe, is the Colson Park item. Also consent agenda, item 1O. Asking that that be separated, not removed from the agenda, but just separated so that Assistant City Administrator Iflin can go over a tweak that needs to be made there relative to the alternative delivery method. There was conflict. It was inconsistent versus what the memo said versus what was in the resolution. So we want to get that fixed. Then update on the audit. The audit is on the February, that being the utility audit. It is on the February 3rd City Council work session. SL Circle will be onsite to present that and answer questions. They will be actually doing a video conference of the results of their audit here the third week of January with staff and with councilmembers Rupsis and Owen. So they'll present it there to us internally inclusive of council and then the actual public conversation will be on the 3rd. They have received, just today, we got word that all of the meters that were literally taken out of homes, swapped out, sent off to a third-party independent analysis. That work has all been completed and their analysis is done and was sent over to SL Circle. That was the most time-consuming, frankly, issue we were a little concerned about as to whether they could meet their deadline, of which they can, which is the deadline in the contract has them finishing their work by the end of this month. So that all is forthcoming. They've also, I think some last week, they're about 60% through the review of all of the electronic files. So that's on target there. So key date being February 3rd work session with SL Circle here in-house presenting that audit. Other thing is patience, challenges. We know removing snow is never a straightforward, easy task in Billings, Montana, in part, I would say, because we don't get enough of it. You may not recall this, but we haven't plowed residential streets in a couple of years because we just don't get that much snow. Each time we plow residential streets, it's about a $300,000 cost. So as you may recall, we collect tax to create that fund. Seven, eight years ago, the decision was made to start doing neighborhood plowing. I personally think that's a good thing. Rather than tax every year for that, once that fund is full, it stays that way. We don't tax for it in the next few years unless the fund is used. So on the taxing side. On the use side, it's a different challenge in our community if we get 10 inches of snow in a dump and it stops snowing versus just snowing for two or three or four days straight because our first priority is always to do arterials and collectors. So we have the crews and the equipment that can handle arterials and collectors quite well. Between us and the state does all their roads. We use subcontracts to help us on residential. And we definitely had some challenges this year. Both they had challenges with their staffing levels and so we're going to see how we might be able to adjust that in future years. So that is just a challenge we're facing. We did, because of the slowness and being able to get out and do residential plowing between ourselves and our contractor, we did use mag chloride and intersection sanding and chemical that we normally don't do in residential neighborhoods but to try to help minimize the risk and the problems there. So that's under review. I've been asked, you know, what's the methodology? Why do we pick, the city's broken into six zones. It's not complex. We start at one, we move down. The next time we have an event, we start at two, zone two, and move down. Next time we have an event, three, et cetera. So why did we start in zone four, I think it was this time? Or was it one? That's how we start the season typically. I'd ask for, you know, this event, let's assume we're going to get some more snow sometime this winter. We will always need help from neighbors relative to neighbors who can't shovel in front of their, whether it's their sidewalk or whether it's their driveway or whether they get a car blocked in. And we've known all along, one of our significant challenges in Billings is for decades, we built the community with the infrastructure that the sidewalk was attached to the curb. And as soon as you plow snow, that snow has got to go somewhere and all too typically, it ends up on the sidewalk. So we do ask that people help their neighbors because what we just witnessed is one of the most challenging things, right? We get some snow, but it doesn't just come in a dump. It takes several days. It warms up to 40 degrees. It gets cold at night and it freezes rock hard. And even a plow going over it doesn't really do the job. So all of that is always under review as to how to do a better job. Why not more contractors? Just as kind of an FYI, the last bidding cycle we did, the pricing difference was 300 bucks an hour. I think the second lowest was $500 an hour and another one was 550 or something. So we don't have three different contractors out there at three different prices doing work for us. But we're going to see how might we get more contractors onboard because one of the issues we ran into is they themselves didn't have enough staffing. They were short and nobody can really staff up for this because you could go two winters in a row with a contract with the city and never get a call to do winter plowing or this year we might have one event or we might have four events. So anyways, some of what's going on there. So we're well aware certainly of the frustration, particularly in, it really is in neighborhood plowing. We don't hear much because I think on the arterials and collectors, the crews really are on top of that. We have the equipment and the staffing to do it. And I suppose the other question we commonly get is why aren't the schools a priority at the same level as arterial collectors? And Debbie showed me a map today. So many of them are in residential neighborhoods. So it's first arterial collectors and then yes, then we try to hit those residentials that are near a school. So if the council were to want to discuss it, whether this winter or at the end of the winter as to what we do and how we do it and why we do it, happy to do so. Also, I guess lastly, I don't think ever appropriate for us to point relative, the decision was made. Like I said, I think it's the right one. It predates me to start doing residential streets. We should do residential streets. How we do it is administrative operation and function, not a council function. So always welcome your feedback, but that's kind of where we are in plowing at this point.
Very good.
Lastly, no ex parte communication. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for that information. We'll move on with our agenda then. The next item up is our public comment on non-public hearing agenda items. And tonight, that's just our consent agenda number one. And all the subparts, there's copies of the agenda. If anybody doesn't have one, back on that little red table. Item number two, which is a zone change, will have a public hearing. So if you're here to comment on number two, wait. If you're here to comment on anything on our consent agenda number one, this is your opportunity. We just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and tell us your name and address. So with that, please make a little line if you'd like to comment on anything on the consent agenda. Now, please go to the podium. Is there any public comment on item number one, the consent agenda or any sub-items there? Is there any public comment on item number one?
Is this non-consent agenda items or consent agenda items?
The consent agenda, item one.
Okay. What's a non-consent agenda item?
Oh, for non, be at the end.
Public comment.
Yeah, a public comment on things not on our agenda will be at the end of the meeting, which won't go too late tonight, we hope. Knock on wood. Any other comment, though, on the consent agenda? What's on our agenda, item number one? Before I close the public comment, period. No one is moving to the podium? So I guess I can close the public comment, period. Councilmember Raspliter?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to separate item 1N and 1Q3 and 1Q4 for purposes of recusing.
Very good. Thank you. Item 1N and 1Q3 and 4. I also need to recuse myself from item 1H. There's a donation item there. And I will separate, per the city administrator's report, item 1O, the resolution authorizing the use of alternative project delivery for the Amen Park Rec Campus. Any other, I do want to make a comment about 1P. That's an item, that's an emergency resolution. That will require a three-quarter vote for approval. Our city administrators told us we do not need to separate that because usually the consent agenda is approved unanimously or at least a three-quarters. But on the small chance it were approved by something other than a three-quarter vote, I would ask for reconsideration so we can go back and make it very clear that that item has been addressed with a three-quarter vote. Councilmember Boyet?
And then also we want to remove 1A3.
Yeah, thank you. And that will be a change to the amend or to the agenda. So once we get separations, I'll ask for a motion on that item 1A3. Thank you. Any other separations? Any other separations? Okay, I don't see any. So on the issue of our agenda, councilmember Boyet, did you want to make a motion of that effect?
For the 1A3? I move that we remove 1A3 till further time down the road when the staff is prepared to bring it forward.
Very good. Second, my councilmember Nies. We'll address that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if in favor of the motion, just to remove item 1A3, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we've got our separations. Is there a motion relating to the non-separated items? Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda items except for 1O, 1N, 1Q3, 1Q4, and 1H as stated.
Very good. Second, my councilmember Nies. Any discussion now on those items? Councilmember Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to sort of state again for the record. I see here in 1E, we're submitting the annual Vista application and just wanted to restate my belief that when those Vista projects align with city priorities for those who were the host site, that tends to work better than. So I would just encourage our planning department to continue to develop those Vista VADS that really align with council priorities. I think where we've done that in recent years, that's been very successful.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? Councilmember Gulick, Rupsis, Boyet?
We have a lot of donations that are on the, from a lot of rite of entities, seven of them that are on the consent agenda. Just want to thank all the donors. They really do lots of smaller details as well as contributions to programs. They really do enrich the community and experience a sense of place. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilor Rupsis?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just had a question on 1B. This is the contract, Motorola, to replace the outdated 911 emergency. I'm just kind of wondering, it says in the memo that this is an issue with dire consequences if we don't do this and it was not in this year's budget and we have the money. So I'm just wondering why all those things would go together? If it was really something that was so serious, why wasn't it budgeted for especially if we have the money in the 911 file?
Let me ask Fire Chief Valdez to tackle that. Thanks.
We're mayor and council.
You got it. It's working.
So the reason why is we had two items come to us at the same time last year. When I say us, I mean the committee, the 911 Center Committee or Advisory Board. The board recommended that the 911 director select one of the two. So we decided to go with the board, which is what we go upon a few months back. I'm not sure what exactly that was. It was brought to our attention that what we planned to do was to hold off until this next budget cycle for this particular item. It was brought to our attention in September that this item was much more critical and the potential for failure was much higher than what we originally thought. That's why we decided to go ahead and leave that asset now. And the reason, or to give a little backstory behind it, it's essentially a patch for the phone system and the owner of that phone system cannot do a systems upgrade without the patch and that leaves us vulnerable for cyber attack essentially. So we decided to go ahead and make a move on it now to separate phones.
I guess maybe I didn't understand the memo then. I thought it was a hardware refresh.
That is. It's a hardware refresh, is my understanding, to be able to make a patch for the security of the phone system.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Boyet, did you have anything?
No, councilmember Gulick said to say nothing.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion on the non-separated items before we vote? Okay. Do we have a motion? Or I'm sorry, we do have a motion on the floor already. Councilmember Boyet, councilmember Nies. If in favor of the motion for approval of the non-separated items, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously, including I notice the item that needed the three-quarter vote is included in that. First item up that was separated is item 1H. Councilmember Boyet, can I ask you to take over on this item?
So we have a donation to the Parks and Recs from Bill and Ann Cole for the art on the Skyline Trail. He's recusing himself, so I recommend that we have a vote on this. So councilman Nies?
I make a motion to accept item 1H.
Do we have a second? Councilman Gulick? Anybody wants to talk about it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I guess you get to donate something, Bill.
What a deal. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next item up is item 1N, final plat of Skyview Ridge subdivision, second filing. Councilmember Raspliter has recused himself. Councilmember Nies?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 1N as well as 1Q3 and 4 since councilmember Raspliter has recused himself in all of those.
Okay. I don't think there's any problem with that, right? Parliamentarian? So, okay. As there is, second. Councilmember Kennedy? Any discussion? If not, the motion is approval of item 1N and also 1Q3 and 4. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Lastly, pursuant to the city administrator's request is item 1O. Chris, you mentioned that there would be a little description of how this item needs to be changed.
Correct.
Who would like to do that?
I'm going to turn that over to Assistant City Administrator Iflin.
Thank you very much. Kevin, go ahead.
All right. Mayor and council, I apologize for the error in the resolution that we did bring forward, but I think it's a simple correction that we should make here. And if my screen adjusts, you can see the redlined version. What we did is we put design-built contractor in the warehouses in this resolution and it should read general contractor or construction manager. Number one in that third warehouse and then if you move it down a little bit, the seventh warehouse, it's the same error that we made there. And then one more from the city attorney's office that we'd like to correct is just the citing of the statute, the Montana Code Annotated Statute down there. So I would ask that if you do adopt this, that it be with those corrections.
Very good. Councilmember Raspliter?
I'll move to approve agenda item 1O with the corrections recommended by staff.
Very good. Is there a second? Councilmember Nies? Any discussion? Okay. If in favor of the motion for approval, item 1O as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes item one, the consent agenda, and brings us to the first and only item on the regular agenda. Tony, would you read item number two?
Item number two, public hearing and first reading ordinance for zone change 1059 located in the Zimmerman Home Place subdivision, third filing. Zoning commission recommends approval and adoption of the 10 criteria.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raspliter?
I'll be recusing myself from this item as it's our firm as the agent for the applicant.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Raspliter will recuse himself because his firm is the agent, civil engineering firm on this one. Our zoning coordinator, Nicole Cromwell, take it away.
Good day, Mayor and council. This is zone change 1059 for a piece of children's ground in the Zimmerman Home Place subdivision. It's currently so neighborhood office. The proposal is to zone the eastern 2.2 acres of this lot as corridor mixed-use one as a path frontage on Zimmerman Trail. The zoning commission held a public hearing on December 3rd and is forwarding a recommendation to you of approval. Sorry for the small type on the screen here, but this is a comparison list between what's allowed in neighborhood office or what's allowed in corridor mixed-use one. The biggest difference, of course, is that in corridor mixed-use one, retail services are allowed and in neighborhood office, they are not. Corridor mixed-use one also allows a full mixed-use building with more than five dwelling units in that same structure. It allows one to four-story buildings. The neighborhood office only allows one to two-and-a-half story buildings. So there's a lot more uses available for corridor mixed-use one than in neighborhood office. This is the subject property and the surrounding zoning. You'll see that there's the mixed residential three to the north, which the city council previously approved in 2024 for the first cooperative housing development in Montana that is not mission-driven. So that is just about to start with building plans and construction permits. To the south is also neighborhood office. On the corner is the Children's Clinic, which was the first development in the Zimmerman Home Place subdivision. To the east across Zimmerman Trail is N3 or Suburban Neighborhood Residential and that is basically the backyards of those homes, patio homes on Hampton Place and Avenue 8. To the west is also public zoning for a public park area and NX3 zoning, which is the Zimmerman Home Place luxury apartments that are currently under construction. Here is the exhibit that was presented to the zoning commission showing the part, the parcel that will, is requested for a zone change. The remaining part of the parcel will stay in neighborhood office zoning. This line follows a future internal street that is proposed for the lot. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. The zoning commission is recommending approval. They believe that it meets the growth policy for the city as well as the West Billings neighborhood plan. It's compatible with the NN zoning to the west, to the south, and the NX3 zoning to the north. Adjacent uses and zoning are compatible, that mixed uses are compatible with multifamily developments. Also, the proposed zoning will begin to address the need for more neighborhood services in this developing subdivision. There are many families who are starting to occupy these residential units out here with no nearby neighborhood services. Here's the subject property. You're standing on Zimmerman Trail looking west and looking north along Zimmerman Trail to Colton Boulevard and looking south on Zimmerman Trail. To the right side of the screen is the Children's Clinic and then across the street are those patio homes. Here's the Children's Clinic close-up and then the patio homes across the street. Here are the zone change criteria. All the findings from the zoning commission are in your staff report. Again, the zoning map. And I think that is the map. There's the And I think that is, uh, there's the zoning exhibit. That's the last slide. I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Good, thank you. Uh, questions for Nicole? After we have some periods of questions, we'll open up for a, a public hearing. Councilmember Boyet, Councilmember Nice?
I get calls all the time about how bad the traffic is. When will the light stoplight be put in at Avenue D, Zimmerman, have any idea?
Uh, unfortunately, Matt Fogelson has left the meeting. He could have told you for sure. But all of the money has already been received to start the installation. I am going to predict that it's probably in their development plans for the coming construction season. Just because it's all available, all you need to do is pull the, the electrical and set up the masks.
Very good. Councilmember Nice?
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, if I remember correctly, wasn't this, it wasn't, well, I don't think it was this property, it was the properties above this came to us a few years ago, and the neighborhoods across the street had protested because it was within their, their zone. Did we get any protests on this from neighbors at all?
We did not receive any public comments either in writing or at the public hearing.
And they were notified?
They were notified, including all the unit owners and the unit ownership across the street.
Because if I remember correctly, is, there was a pretty good protest over having this CMU two, or CMU one built so close to Zimmerman, because you got four-story apartments, which is gonna block, as we saw in the picture, these, kind of their backyard windows, kind of looking out. Um, and, and I'm surprised that no one came, but I'm still not real excited seeing four-story apartments going down Zimmerman, or far, far, not apartments, but four-story buildings being built right on the edge of Zimmerman Trail. Is that, that's what, what they can build, correct?
They could build that. There was a concept plan that was shown at the pre-application meeting that we don't show at the zoning hearings because it's not tied to that, but I'm sure the applicant can describe it.
We'll hear from the applicant later then.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Nicole, I've got a question. Uh, traffic's always an issue, and the, uh, trigger for a traffic impact study is always an important issue. Earlier, uh, the council, uh, some months ago, raised the trigger point from 500, uh, trips to 1,000, I believe. That would be a shame. You, you would never actually trigger that if, if that was being measured, uh, individual parcel by individual parcel. Can you just remind us why that's not the case, that you, we can take account of the accumulative, uh, uh, development? But I forget exactly why that is. Probably because there was, there's an SIA back in there that makes that a condition, or can you just remind us why we're looking at the cumulative effect of development over time when it comes to triggering of a traffic impact study?
Well, the traffic impact study has already been done for this subdivision overall, and it was based on the most intense uses of the property that was in place at the time, including, in this case, if those properties were corridor mixed use versus neighborhood office. Every time a new subdivision or filing of a subdivision is sent to the city, the traffic engineer for the city requests an update to that previously filed traffic impact study. And if there's any changes, such as there's more impact on this intersection than we thought there would be, and that's based on actual traffic plus any new traffic for the updates. So that's when those continual reviews and updates happen until the final piece of property in the subdivision is developed. Kind of far away from that right now, so every time a new filing happens, an update letter has to come.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, Councilmember Boyet, we will ask for any presentation from the, uh, developer in just a minute. Councilmember Boyet?
Tell, uh, one thing we brought up some years ago is, how far is the setback from, say, the sidewalk to the spark, where they start their building, their four-story building? What's the setback?
There are what we call build-two zones, and on this person, parcel, there actually will be Zimmerman Trail. And then that shared access that's shown on the south part of the property will also be considered a private road and have some build-two requirements. And then that internal road, if it's built to a private street standard, we'll also look at that for any reconstruction. In the CMV one zone district, you can have a front property line, the building setback between five and 28. And that setback starts based on any easement that affects the property. So if there's an easement along Zimmerman Trail, we don't start measuring that build-two zone until we're behind that easement. I don't think there's an easement here, but there might be a utility easement, and there's certainly that access easement along the back. Also, many times, a builder will ask for administrative relief to increase that build-two to 25 feet. Once you get beyond 25 feet, then that would be a variance from the subject property.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Nicole? Uh, Councilmember Nice?
Uh, Nicole, can you clarify the build-two? Your build-two is on all, all sides of the property, or just the adverse side of the property is considered the front, and in this case, which is the adverse side of this property?
We would determine what is the front based on an application for a permit. So if the building were having frontage on that shared access, that would be the front for the build-two zone. And since this is a large site that will have multiple buildings, we'll determine that front location based on a master site plan that's submitted, because it's going to have two or more buildings on the site. So we do that first before any permits are submitted for building.
So there won't be, so could Zimmerman, could Zimmerman Trail?
A building could have front on Zimmerman, but it also could have front on that
Okay.
shared access to the south, or could have front if there's another shared access to the north.
So it could be built as, as close as five feet from the s, public sidewalk, up four stories on Zimmerman, or the other stories that, like, because you said up five feet is built, built two, right?
Like, including, you know, measuring any easement because of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, I don't see any other questions, so thank you. Uh, Nicole, can you introduce our, uh, developer?
Sir, but, well, Craig Dalton from Performance Engineering is here on behalf of the owner, as well as, um,
Jeff.
Jeff Canning, sorry, from Collaborative Design, who worked with the prospective buyers of the property to develop a, uh, some building layouts.
Very good, feel free.
Should we leave this up?
That'd be great.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Cole. Um, a couple of things I wanted to bring back up and address as part of this is, you know, this is a, this is considered an infill project. This is a vacant farm ground in the middle of town. Um, and one of our priorities as a city is to, to develop these areas, to stop putting pressure on our infrastructure as we keep doing things further and further west, so. This is a great opportunity as an infill project in, in to truly embrace the mixed-use development. There is a lot of rooftops going up, as you guys very well know. I mean, we're gonna have, um, once this co-op gets going, I think we're going to be pushing 600 units in this development here shortly. And, you know, that does create a traffic load. The ways that you can help to reduce traffic is by providing services that people can access without leaving their neighborhood. So that is an opportunity here that, um, I think, uh, we shouldn't waste. Um, regarding the traffic study, yes, we, we've done a traffic study at the very beginning of this, uh, when this thing was first, uh, developed and subdivided into this north half. And we've done subsequent studies after that. Uh, as Nicole mentioned, as we come in with new, new developments, and we have a better understanding what those uses and intensities are gonna be, oftentimes a traffic engineer will review that and say, you know, are you falling within the original box, or, hey, we need to update because you're, you know, you're burning through some of the trips that we had already planned for, and we need to evaluate for potential, uh, additional impacts. They'll do the same thing, um, when this comes in, depending on what those uses are going to be. Uh, if they're a low-intensity use, we've probably already covered it. If it's something that was, it's not conceptualized from the potential buyer to do anything that's four stories, and I'll let Jeff speak to that a little bit further, because he's been working with them, but should there be a, a higher intensity, then that would probably trigger traffic. Um, as Nicole mentioned, the money has been, um, from the original developer and the applicant, rest in lease, the, the money's been contributed to the Avenue D intersection. It's in the city engineering's hands now to, uh, trigger that when that money should go in. And, um, with that, I'll, I'll happily answer any questions. If there are any, you know, message to Jeff to talk to the developer.
Very good, thank you. Councilor Boyet?
Thank you. Um, one of our big concerns is having a four-story building against the sidewalk, truly, so people walk down there seeing this great big thing. Can you estimate your setback from, we have pictures, how far back from the sidewalk?
Five feet.
Five feet, and eight, twenty feet.
Yeah, so I, I will tell you, the, the sidewalk isn't actually right up against the property line. I think there's about a five-foot space where the, where the existing kind of three-wire fences, that's generally where the property line starts. And honestly, from my standpoint as the civil engineer, uh, I like to push those buildings away from the property lines as, as much as we can. And generally, we try to, just because we need to make a grade. I mean, the site doesn't look like it has a whole lot of fall, but it's actually falling at a 2%. And we start running buildings, 100-foot-long building, um, you know, on a 2% grade, there's two-foot of fall between the top and the bottom of the building. We need to get sidewalks in those buildings, so. I like to push those back to give ourselves the opportunity to keep the ADA standard. So I will tell you that, um, yes, there is those front requirements, build-two, it is part of that. It is an arterial street. Um, there is, there is already 150-foot right-of-way, there's, exists as, as of today. And, um, you know, we, we would try to push those back as, as far as we could, just from a structural stability standpoint and, and a comfort standpoint. But speaking of the, to the fore, I know that, you know, we're not, you guys are voting on what could, you know, what could be, not necessarily what's being proposed, right? This, uh, this applicant or the potential buyer has, has gone through the effort to hire collaborative to start conceptualizing the site. You know, this is, they put in their own money and, and we presented that at the neighborhood. We, we didn't get as many people as we'd hoped. We only had two people show up. They were talking about pros testing, but once they kind of got a chance to get in front of them and, and talk with them, um, they were, uh, they were more at ease than they were at the prior, prior, probably why they're not here today, so, thank you, yep.
Very good. Any other, uh, questions for Craig? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you very much. Jeff, did you have anything?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, not much more to add, because again, as Craig mentioned, you can't pass this, uh, based on what we might do, is what could be done. But, um, our proposed flyers are sensitive to neighboring, they're directed to me, is to make this more like a village concept. And so that's why it's three buildings, and it's got a mix of flat roofs and gable roofs, and one and two-story buildings mixed to fit in more with the character. And that's what's proposed, but absolutely we could put a four-story in there. But that's not the direction. I mean, Craig mentioned it's great infill design development, uh, the services and some of the things they could provide, there would be a benefit to the neighborhood. I'd also be glad to find 150-foot wide right-of-way, so it's pretty big, plus utility easement, plus five-to-20-foot on build-as-own, that, you know, is a requirement for that one environment. We're also required to get either up or down like you're to build to the corner. So we also have a requirement, either go to the moors or the south, to subscribe to that build-as-own as well. And we, we also have a minimum frontage check we have to do across the fronts of the building, has to be 65% of what we're looking at. So, all right, doing it in a combination of buildings, we're hoping to break it up, so it doesn't seem like a 150-foot wall. So that's why we're proposing three buildings smaller. I mean, that, that's with the guidelines from the subdivision, we're the CMV part of something there, just so you know.
Very good. Questions, uh, any questions for Jeff? Nope, doesn't look like it. Thanks very much. Okay, uh, Council will open up for, uh, our public hearing. This is a public hearing on, uh, item number, uh, two, zone change, uh, uh, number 1059. If anybody would like to comment on item number two, this is your chance. Just ask that you go to the podium there and tell us your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Is there any public comment on item number two? Any public comment on item number two? Before I close the public comment, last chance. No one is standing up, no one's going forward, so we'll close the, uh, public hearing on item number two. Back to Council. Councilmember Kennedy?
Mayor, I would make a motion, um, having conducted a public hearing, considered written and spoken testimony, I move to approve the first reading ordinance for zone change 1059 and adopt the findings of the ten criteria as recommended.
Very good. Councilmember Tid, thank you. Councilwoman Tidwell indicates a second, uh, discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Nice?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think similar to the last time, I, I won't be supporting this motion. I think, uh, building commercial that close to N, uh, N3 residential, uh, needs to be, have a little bit more space. They did that the last time. They, they took care of that issue, uh, with the property north of that by separating it a little bit further. They could have done the same thing in this property, so, um, again, I, to be consistent with the fact that I think we need to make some good separations between, uh, housing and commercial zones, I would about support that motion.
Very good. Any, uh, other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Rupstas?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to say, last, last time with the, um, the change to, to the property just in the north here, I, I didn't support that, uh, because I didn't think leaving that strip of NO useless land, um, just to get around the, um, potential protest, uh, was a good use of land, um, and to fulfill the, one of the ten criteria. Um, I'm glad to see that they didn't do that, that this time. Um, I'm happy to see services coming directly in that subdivision. Um, I'm appreciative of the sensitivity that the developers are showing to, uh, to the neighborhood, and so I'm happy to support this one this time.
Thank you very much. Uh, further discussion? Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none, the motion is for approval consistent with the staff recommendation of item number two. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, Councilmember Nice voting in opposition, uh, Councilmember Aspilider, uh, not voting, and having refused himself, all other votes being, uh, in the affirmative, the, uh, motion passes, and that concludes item number two. Uh, brings us then to public comment on non-agenda items. So if somebody, uh, is here and would like to comment on something that was not on our agenda tonight, uh, please feel free. Just ask that you, uh, speak, uh, loudly into the microphone up there and tell us your name and address, even if we already know it.
Frankie Walton, 2131 TV Drive, and I want to build it in up there with your book fans. Uh, I'm not coming here to complain about my water bill, because the city does have a real good connect between my water bill and, uh, the city, so. But you, you've been fighting through a lot of problems with billing. And, so I, I started looking, looking back at my bills, and I don't know what I'm paying for solid waste in mine. Here's, here's my last six solid waste bills. 1349, 812, 769, 2117, and then July and August were combined at 3712, which figures out to 1856. What am I paying a month for solid waste? I have no idea. There's no transparency there. But yet, it's a monthly bill, you pay 12 times a year, and you get a public water bill, or a public utilities bill 12 times a year. So you've got solid waste, you've got storm sewer, and you've got sanitary sewer, and if you took and moved the sanitary sewer increase from April to July, when you have all your rate increases combined, all three of those would stay exactly the same for anybody in the city limits for one year, 12 months. That makes really easy to figure. Once it are in Heights Water, that's the only bill you'd get, is those three, and they would always be the same for a whole year. There's no I, I think anybody can write up a program to make that work. So the only issue you really have is the amount of water used by the city residents in the, or in the city buildings that have. in the, or in the city buildings that have city water and not high water. That's the only difference. Otherwise, everything's the same every month. But yet, I got those bills for solid, I don't know what I'm paying for solid waste. Haven't got a clue. And so along with the July and August bill where they sent the combined bill for sanitary sewer, I paid 10 cents more each month than what the rest of the time it is because they combined two months. It was 20, so if they do that to everybody, 20 cents times all the people on sanitary sewer, that's a lot of money. And it should be the same every month, every month, every month should be the same, those three. Should be pretty simple, I would think, but. I'm just, I'm confused because I don't know what I'm paying for solid waste. I haven't got a clue. Thank you.
Thank you, former councilmember Ewald. And we can talk about that once we're done with public comment if there's anything to discuss. So any other public comment, items not on our agenda tonight? Any other public comment, items not on our agenda? Before I close, public comment, period. Okay, no one is walking forward, so I will close the public comment, period. First of all, just comment, I don't see anybody in public works here. That same issue came up in an email that I responded to today. And I had to admit, I didn't really know what was going on. So I, I know some of those bills included different service periods, but I don't know to that degree. Did you want to comment?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. So, sure.
That was Frank?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The complaint just catches off.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So I'll be, I'll be quick, I'll just, I'll just go. It ties directly to the problems with the software conversion. I believe if you look back over the years, you will see a completely consistent monthly charge. Part of the software conversion problem caused issues with the solid waste monthly fee not being necessarily the same time period as your water 30-day. Prior to that, it was always a consistent one month. So yes, for something I can't explain, why would, and I'm making up months, why would the June month have counted 26 days and the July and August 60-day period turn out to be 67 days? But you will find, at least what we'd find in our analysis, is nobody was over or undercharged collectively for that period as to paying what was adopted by council. Forget the change, $14 and some cents for your one, if you're a one-can home. That is what the charge is, but you didn't see it necess, you, some bills you saw that number, other bills you didn't see that number because the time period wasn't the consistent month period.
Okay, Chris, do you know whether that will be changed going forward? Because we don't want to have to have this conversation forever.
Yes, so two changes. So the next iteration of changes for the February, March, trying to do that as soon as we can, but do it well, is to add additional information. I believe your, our prior bills over the years did not have a service period for each separate utility. So there was not a separate service period for water, separate sewer, separate solid waste, separate storm. The next iteration of improvements will to not both get those service dates on, which will almost always just line up with each other, as well as what we did have in the old bills and are, and are working to get back to is what the rate is for each of the tiers in the water. You don't really care about it in anything else, but when it comes to water, you'll be able to see what was that, X thousand gallons was at X cost, Y cost, Z cost, depending upon how much you use. So those are in the next iteration of upgrades. So that, yes, what we want to get back to and even improve is that a person can look at their bill, do all the calculations themselves, and concur that they're being charged the right amount.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Kenny?
Chris, I know you're going to try to do this February, March and put it on the bill and everything. Can you send us a cheat sheet? Can you show us what the rate was last year? And the tiers, what the rate is this year, and what the rate would be next year on the tiers?
And whatever has been adopted. We've not adopted rates for the next year. Our last cycle did two years, and I think very easily to, I, yeah.
Could you send us each those and show us the tiers and all of that? And then could you do the, the storm water for residential and storm water for commercial, how that figured? And then for the garbage pickup, what you charge each household if it's a smaller or larger one for each month?
Yeah, all, all of that we can pull together because it exists out on our website today, as well as I think it's been emailed and it was a part of the adoption when we set rates tied to the budget. So it won't be difficult to pull those things back up for you.
Then I have a cheat sheet. When people call me, I can figure it out. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment on non-agenda items. We do have, I believe, Councilmember Kennedy, you wanted to get this item on a future agenda. This is not for action tonight, but you wanted to alert us to it.
Yes, I had said that I would come back in January with a council initiative. And the council initiative is, the short name of the initiative is on staff mileage. I've talked earlier about it to department ads that receive car allowances. What I'd like to do is have this revert back to going for, just reimbursing people for mileage for using their own vehicles. And so I would ask that we put this on a future agenda and have a vote up or down going forward with it.
Very good. So, Chris, this will go onto a future agenda for discussion, not for approval. I mean, my understanding is the initiative was, is what we would then be voting on. Or did you want to vote tonight on the initiative, which would take whatever the action is proposed in the document?
I would ask.
We'd like to have it on the agenda in advance.
If we need to have a vote to put the initiative on an agenda, then we could do that tonight. But I promised I would give it a chance for everyone to take a look at it. But I'd like it to be put on an agenda and have discussion on it.
So in that case, my recommendation is, yeah, just go on a future agenda and then we can actually talk about what action we would or wouldn't take. But that way it'd be on the agenda for the public. They would have some notice of that. Councilmember Char?
Thank you, I really appreciate having this written out, something to look at. I would guess I would recommend that this go first to the Budget and Finance Committee. And if that can happen in the next, before the next council meeting, that would be the best thing, I think, because it's squarely within budgeting.
Actually, I won't be at the next budget meeting, so I would rather just bring it up to the next council meeting.
Okay, I mean, that's, yeah, your prerogative. But I guess I would just say, I would strongly recommend it goes through budgeting. This is why we have the OSMM.
It'll go to the budget once.
Gotcha, okay, I see. Thanks, that's it.
So there's no action on that item, but you're now on notice? So if you have any questions specifically, bring them up with the, with the Kennedy staff where everything appropriate. With that, aren't any other initiatives? I think we might just set a new record. You're adjourned.
One hour.